I call to order Wilson Mills Town Council Meeting on April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and ask our clerk to lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Emily, Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for the opportunity that we have to come together and do the work for the town of Wilson's Mills, and we just ask you to be with all of us during this meeting, Lord, the ones making the decisions, and the ones who are here with concerns that they can communicate and do what's best for the citizens of the town. In your name we pray. Amen.
Let's stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any objections, comments?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
A motion by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Tim Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next, we have the regular council meeting of March the twenty-first. Emily, there is a error on the seventh page under Police Department Report. Fourth paragraph down. I don't know what you were intending, but that sentence doesn't make any sense. So. If you okay. So with those corrections, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of March the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two?
So moved.
McGowan made the motion to approve. Councilman Dobbin made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have the closed session minutes for December the twenty-twenty-one. Do I have a motion to approve them? Tim Brown made the motion to approve. Councilman Dobbin made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have the closed session minutes for March the twenty. Councilman Trippett made the motion to approve them.
Second.
Council McGowan made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All of any opposed? We open the first open forum. Anybody want to make a comment? Come forward, state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
You're right, seven twenty-five, power town road. I would like to know what happened to the blackboard program that we used to have?
The Blackboard Connect was disconnected in January because the council decided last July to go with C Click Fix, which is an app for the town that gives information about what's going on in the town. It's also a way for camp for citizens to ask questions and keep up with what's being done on a problem that they've reported. It's on our website, has been since July, and it's also, I think the link is also on our Facebook page.
Now, what is that?
It's an app on the phone, or you can go to the website, or you can make a phone call, and you can report things, or you can go on there and find out what's going on in the town and.
What about these people that don't have computers and websites and all that stuff that can go on them? How can they find out all this stuff?
It was a decision that was made by council last July. If that's something that they need to look into differently, council can talk about it. It wasn't my decision, but it was, I was just explaining what it was, so.
So if you want to know anything, you got to go to town hall and ask if you ain't got computers or all these kinds of apps and everything that you're talking about.
Well, you you can call us if you want to. If you don't have a computer, anybody can call and ask a question. But the Blackboard Connect is only, the only way we get updates, we're getting updates on Blackboard Connect for the phone numbers where the calls would go out to people, or if they had publicly listed phone numbers. And as you know, most people don't have landlines anymore. So the percentage rate for people receiving those messages was about eighteen percent. So if people didn't go online, or call us, or come by town hall to add their cellphone number, we had no way of knowing to put their cellphone number in that system to get it to them. The only way we got updates for people that got their phone calls were if they called us, or they still had a landline that was published in the phone book.
Okay. I was wondering, because I know that I ain't heard nothing a long time.
It was about twenty-five hundred dollars a year, and to have eighteen percent of the people reached, it wasn't worth that money.
Now, how much does this last thing cost?
It's five thousand a year. And we're questioning whether or not we want to keep that this year, because we have advertised it every way we know how to advertise it at town hall, on Facebook, on the website, at several meetings. It was discussed, and we don't have people signing up for that either.
So.
But.
So they're not interested. A lot of them are not interested.
A lot of people want to know how to keep informed about the town, and and we're doing, we're trying different things to try to keep people informed, but if you don't sign up for it, or, you know, give us your information so we can get that information to you, we we don't know any other way to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
I might, I might add to that, that we've, we've, we've elected to do a, a town crier type newspaper that'll be on the town's website. However, once we get that thing up and running with somebody to write it and keep activities up to date and schedules and what's happening in town, that'll be very helpful to a lot of people. But for those that don't have access to a computer, I'm sure you could come downtown, and they would, they would have the current issue printed off for you. They could run it off, give it to you. That's something that I know we're working on.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to comment? We close the open forum. Now we're going into public hearings, and we have got six. And I ask for all of you to be patient. Let's go through them. We want everybody to have an opportunity to speak, if you want to speak. We want everybody to have an opportunity to tell us your concerns. But we got to do the public hearings one at a time. So they'll have to be opened, closed, and voted one at a time. Okay? I open the first public hearing, an ordinance to extend the corporate civil limits, Town Ordinance one ninety-seven for the Little Property. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward, state your name, your address, limit your comments to three minutes. I'm closing the public hearing. It's six forty-one. I need a motion from council.
Make a motion, we adopt the ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the town of Wilson's Mills, North Carolina, under Town Number one ninety-seven. Do I have to word that differently, Councilor?
Um, no, I, I think that was fine. I, I just want to make a quick comment on the form of the ordinance that's included in the agenda. I think there was an error there, but I'll get with the staff to make sure that's correct before it's signed. It's, it's listed as being property owned by the town of Wilson's Mills, and I, I don't think that's accurate. And that's the same for each of the, the ordinance, annexation ordinances. But with that note, that, that, I might, I might suggest that you add to the motion that it be as amended.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the Town Number one ninety-seven ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the town of Wilson's Mills, North Carolina, as amended.
I have a question, please. I'm sorry. I don't quite understand the rules and regulations of these meetings. My name is Crystal Hoffman, and I live at fifty-three hundred U.S. Seventy, Highway West. Across the road from the property, I thought maybe you would tell us a little bit about what's going on and why that property is being amended into the Wilson Mills city limits.
I'm happy to give a quick, quick response to that, and that's just that it's pursuant to state law. There's a process that's followed when a property owner desires that their property be annexed into a municipality. And in this case, there's a application process where the property owner simply fills out an application indicating their desire for that property to be annexed into the town. In this case, the, the landowner, Mrs. Little, I believe, has done, followed that procedure to request annexation. There really doesn't have to be any standard as far as, you know, what the use is going to be at, at this point for, for the town's purposes, so long as the petition meets the requirements and the town desires that it be included in the corporate limits, then it, it can proceed.
And is that limited to just that property? What about the surrounding properties?
That, that would have to be taken up by the property owners.
Individual notice.
Right, who would like to pursue that. It's a voluntary process.
Thank you.
In other words, the town cannot annex. The people have to request to be annexed. Okay, we have a motion made by Councilman McGowan. We have a second by Councilman Trippett. All in favor? Let it be known, say and I.
Aye.
All opposed? I open the second public hearing at six forty-four. It's an ordinance to extend the corporate city limits, Wilson Mills Ordinance one ninety-eight, Wayne Nord Strickland Property. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward, state your name, your address, limit your comments to three minutes. I'm closing the public hearing. It's six forty-five. I need a motion.
I make a motion that we we approve ordinance one, Number one ninety-eight, an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the town of Wilson's Mills, North Carolina, as amended.
Councilman McGowan made the motion. Councilman Dobbin seconded it. All in favor? Let it be known, say and I.
Aye.
All opposed? I open the public hearing at six forty-five to extend the corporate city limits. Town Ordinance one ninety-nine, Capital Properties of Raleigh Property. Anyone wishing to make a comment, please come forward, state your name, your address, limit your comments to three minutes. And if some of you are wondering the procedures, why I'm sitting here, by law, I'm supposed to sit here for a minute. I have to give y'all a chance to comment if you want to. I'm not trying to rush you. I just want you to know why it's open. I close the public hearing at six forty-six. I need a motion.
Make a motion, we approve ordinance Number one ninety-nine, an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the town of Wilson's Mills, North Carolina, as amended.
Second.
Council McGowan made the motion. Councilman Dobbin seconded it. All in favor? Let it be known, say and I. All opposed? I open the public hearing to extend the corporate limits of the town of Wilson Mills, Town Ordinance two hundred, for the Strickland Property. Anyone having a comment, please come forward, state your name, your address, limit your comments to three minutes. I close the public hearing at six forty-eight. I need a motion.
Make a motion, and we approve. There we go. I make a motion, we approve ordinance, Town Ordinance Number two hundred, an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the town of Wilson's Mills, North Carolina, as amended.
Motion made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Brown. All those in favor? Let it be known, say and I. All opposed? Open the public hearing for, at six forty-eight, for the rezoning of the Little Property located on Highway Seventy Business. Anyone wishing to come forward and make a comment, please state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening. My name's Brad Hart. I'm with Withers Rabanel Incorporated, the engineering firm, Cary. It's a consultant for this project. With me here, sorry, my address is seven one-two, Okanichi Drive, Fuquay Varina. And with me here tonight is Todd Alsop. He's with the developer, R B V seventy LLC, and with Windjam Development. And just, just to keep it short and sweet, so the rezoning that's requested is MU for mixed use. The current plan is not to do a wide mixture of uses, but to allow for a town home development. And so we had done a preliminary concept plan that we shared with the planning department over the last couple of months, and had some, some pretty positive feedback. And, you know, we've also talked at the planning board meeting about, you know, water and sewer and understanding that there's a sewer capacity issue that's, that's lingering for a couple years before it gets resolved, and the developers are aware of that. And, but we would still like to proceed with the zoning approvals at this time, and then take the time over the next, you know, year and a half or so to refine the concept plan, court the, the proper builders to come into the neighborhood so that we can time it with when the sewer comes into play. And the developers have been coordinating with the adjacent development project of all the branch relative to where that sewer connection would go, and work that out. So we've been, you know, mindful of, of the issues at hand, and, and we'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
So what is the property being used for right now, sir?
It's right now vacant.
No agricultural use whatsoever?
Um, I don't. I'm not sure if it's being currently farmed, but I think it has been farmland. But do you know, Todd, if it's being currently farmed, it's not.
You don't have to know when it was last used as farmland, do you, sir? Okay.
You can come forward to let him sit down, and then you can state your concerns.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Remember to restate your name.
Crystal Hoffman, fifty-three hundred U.S. Seventy West Business, the property across the road. And I didn't mean to rush you, and, and talking about the water in the sewer being on that side of the highway, well, water and sewer, well, water is now available. Will sewer be available across our side of the highway as well as part of this? Or are we not part of the Wilson Mills Town Limits to where we have sewer access?
Okay, if you're not in the city limits of the town of Wilson Mills, you have not been annexed, then we cannot offer you sewer. It has to come from the county.
It has to come from Johnston County.
Yes, we cannot, we cannot put you on our schedule at all. It will have to come through Johnston County.
And is that what part of this process is, getting it?
Yes, that's why he wanted to do this, because when he did, when they do this, then we have to help the county provide the water and sewer for that. But it's, it's, if you're not annexed to the town, then you cannot be part of our water and sewer. It would have to come solely from the county.
And with this mixed use plan, my concern is the traffic that's on that highway already. And we've got a new development, and another new development, and now possibly another new development. And I'm just curious what the plans are for traffic on that highway.
All of those concerns will be taken into consideration when our planning department looks at the final plans, and if there is need for a road or a, a turning lane or whatever, that will be up to developers to put in. And if it's required, they will have to put it in.
Thank you.
And if you, if you want to come to town hall sometime and just sit down with our development staff, they will be glad to go over this stuff with you.
Okay, thank you.
That will be fine.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Hey, again, didn't have anything new to add. I just wanted to make sure that I'm still here, in case there are any questions. Thank you.
I close the public hearing at six fifty-five. I need a motion.
Before the motion, I just want to state real quick, I think, I think you're all aware of this, but for, and, and for purposes of the folks who are asking the questions, that that this rezoning, you know, is, is applies to the land and not to the particular project that's being, you know, brought to our attention tonight, the town homes, you know, any use that is listed within the, the use of MU, mixed use, would be permissible on that property, and that you should consider all those uses when you take your action tonight.
Yes.
I make a motion. Make a motion, we approve. I recommend, I, I make a motion for the approval of R Z dash zero-two, dash two zero two-two, to allow for the rezone from R M S T to M S for this parcel based on the standards for approval and the consistency statement.
Second.
Councilman McGowan made the motion. Councilman Trippett seconded it. All in favor? Let it be known, say and I. All opposed? I open the public hearing at six fifty-six to consider the rezoning of the Strickland Property between Strickland Road and Swift Creek Road. Anyone wishing to comment? Please come forward and state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. You got chosen, right?
I'm Ashley Nagy, one five seven five Strickland Road. I'm so confused. So if you can just point me in a direction, I just want to know what's going on. All I saw was a sign, so I came here.
You need to get to, you need to get to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you not, did you not hear me at all?
Didn't hear much of it, no.
I'm so, did you get my name?
No, I did not.
So my name is Ashley Nagy, one five seven five Strickland Road. I'm a little confused. I just don't understand what's going on. I saw a sign that there is a hearing. There's something going on across the way, and I don't understand. So if you can help me and let me know, give me a little bit of a better idea, please. Sorry, guys. I'm new. I just moved here. I've never done this before, so, sorry.
Okay. What is going on is that the people that own this property have requested it to be rezoned. It's being changed from residential is R M S, from residential to Main Street. So Main Street can, is a, is a lot of different uses can be added in that. What it's going to be is probably more commercial, of small businesses, this sort of thing.
Okay, I'm sorry. So once again, kind of dumb when it comes to this. So once again, it will be like our three houses that are there, and then a bunch of business, sorry, our three houses that are there, and then a bunch of businesses?
Well, where this is located, there's going to be a subdivision on Swift Creek Road anyway, that's already been annexed. Isn't that right? No, it hadn't been annexed. On Strick, I'm sorry, I said Swift Creek. I'm sorry. I'm, it's on Swift Creek Road. I mean, Strickland, again, I said the wrong word. It's on Strickland Road. There is going to be houses there.
Okay.
And then this is going to be above the houses, closer to Seventy Highway, which will be Interstate forty-two.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
If.
Kind of, I'm a little confused, but so I, what I'm getting is there's houses going to be built across the way, and that's that. Either it's like a small community, or town homes, or whatever they're doing, across the way, there's going to be houses built instead of farmland, correct?
Yes, essentially.
Essentially, that's correct. And in order to change a zoning, we, as a council, just can't rubber stamp, you know, change, change the, the use, the intended use of properties the way we see fit. We, we don't, we can't do it. It doesn't work that way. So we have, properties are all zoned certain ways, and in order to change it for this particular development coming up, we have to hold a public hearing, and that's what we're doing to give anyone the opportunity to come up and say, I'm for it, I'm against it, for the, whatever reasons. And we take those reasons under consideration. That's the only hearing. There's no, there's no conclusion. There's no judge coming down saying guilty, not guilty, nothing, that, not that kind of a hearing. The hearing is just for us to be able to hear what the public has to say about it, and, and we can put that into our decision-making process to just change the zoning. That's all.
Yeah, and let me add to that, too, just to clarify. You said this in more or less words, but it is a change of the zoning from residential Main Street transitional to Main Street, and so that allows different uses than currently allowed in R M S T. It allows the uses that are listed in M S, which is Main Street, and it's, and it, it could provide the, the means for a development or interested developer, but it also could provide the means for any other use listed in the M S district, which, under, according to our planning staff's, um, synopsis here, are urban workplace, shop front, detached house, attached house, multifamily building and civic building, integrates shops, restaurants, services, workplace, civic, educational, and higher density housing in a compact pedestrian-oriented environment. And I, I believe that's within your comprehensive plan as well for that area. So it, it doesn't tell you exactly what's going there, because it's not, that's not what this accomplishes. It just rezones that from one type of zoning to a different type, which is consistent with the area, and to allow which is consistent with the area and to allow a certain number of uses listed under that use.
So then, I'm sorry, one last question. So the people who want it rezoned, like, did they, can you tell me if the property was sold? Or if it's just, they're just doing a rezoning? Just curious, sorry.
It was sold.
It was sold.
Property was sold from the original owner and the, the people that bought it have requested the rezon.
Okay.
Ashley, I would, for one, I, I think I'm speaking for the council in general, saying, thank you for coming up. We, we do appreciate your interest, really, as a new resident. And we love it, we meet here, you know, once a month. But I would suggest you go and see Wendy right there during, she's got her card. Just go visit her over at Town Hall and she can explain all of this to you and any other questions you may have. So again, thank you.
We just, we just moved here because there was nothing.
Well, thank you.
And now things are being filmed.
It's the end of that.
Thank you for taking an interest, thank you.
How you doing? Mark Nagy, she's my wife, 1575 Strickland Road. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit. I guess our issue is that we have absolutely no idea what is going on or how to find out prior to coming down here. So maybe, is the, I remember you guys saying something about a website earlier. Is this information that would be on that?
Yes.
Okay, could you, Ashley, write this down?
She, it's on the card, it's on her card.
It's on her card, all the information? Okay, because that's our real issue. We're just trying to kind of figure out what, what exactly to expect over the next X amount of time. And you guys are kind of blowing through it and we're like, what just happened? So, okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, again, thank you for your interest.
Anyone else? I close the public hearing at 7:04. I need a motion.
Make a motion that we rezoned, the approval to rezon the residential Main Street Transitional to the Main Street.
Okay, council.
And just for purposes of your motion, is it, are you suggesting that it be rezoned for, because it's consistent with the town's comprehensive land use and master plan as well?
Yes.
And reasonable for the surrounding areas?
We should have said that.
Okay. I just make a motion to rezon the residential Main Street Transitional to the Main Street. And for it to be inconsistent with the town plan 2040 comprehensive land use and master plan.
I'm just, just to be sure, I heard you right. Do you, do you believe that it's because it is consistent?
Yes.
Right, yes. Okay, just to be sure.
Yes.
For the minutes.
It is consistent.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Councilman Dobbin made the motion. Councilman Tripp seconded. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed? Okay. The agenda says that now I have a chance to comment. And so I want to take time to comment. I thank all of you for being here, for taking the interest to come. Wilson Mills is growing. There's not a whole lot we can do about it. And the one thing that this council, our staff is very concerned about is to make sure that we control the growth that's coming. It's coming with the highway coming like it is, that we cannot stop it. But we want to control it so that it is better for all of our citizens. And we are trying desperately to make all the rezonings that are done to be done inconsistent with our already on the books plans, that our planning staff is aware of everything that's going on and that they keep us informed. We have got a lot going on. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that we cannot make public. If we could, we would. But there are certain things as council, certain things as staff, that we can't say until it's in the public. So just to let you know, we are very concerned for your comments. We want to know what you think. We want to know what you want us to do. And we don't know that unless you come to the meetings and you tell us. I'm so thankful that you're sitting here tonight, that you're understanding what's going on. This group of men and women up here are only interested in what is the best for our town. And we need your help. If you're a resident of Wilson Mill, we need your help. We need your input. And if you don't know where to go, go to Town Hall. And if they don't answer your questions, call me. I'll try my best to answer it. I don't even have any cards yet, Leanna. But I want you to know that I am your mayor and I am here to answer any question I can. If you can't get up with me, Leanna can. I made my comments. It's not open right now. You have a chance in just a minute, but not right now. I was making my comments, okay. Leanna, you're on the agenda.
I do not have anything on the agenda, but I would like to take this time to talk about one of the things that the council has been discussing during their budget sessions, and that is the Citizens Academy that the town is looking to start this coming fall. And that will be an opportunity for a lot of the people who are either new to town or they, even people who have lived here their whole life and they really don't know how local government works, the processes, the departments, what the departments do, not just planning and what's being built around here, but the, the police department, how they protect you, the finance department, how it, how we use taxpayers' money to do the things that we have to do, the administration department that herds all of these council members sitting up here every month. But the Citizens Academy is going to be a six-week program that will go through all of these departments and talk about the different things that the town does, where you can get information from, what the plans are that the council has approved, the plans that they're looking at, their meeting information. It's a lot of really good information for the people who live in the town to learn what's going on. And I would encourage you to keep a check on our website and our Facebook page because once this gets approved by council in their budget, we're going to start advertising the dates. And I hope to see all of you all here that can attend because we're hoping to do it at least once, if not twice, a year.
Thank you. That, that is a good way to learn because a lot of people, you think you know what's going on at town, but if you don't know what the different departments do, you don't know what's going on. So that is a good idea. Okay, the next item on the agenda is our financial statement, Sherry.
Good evening, council. At the end of March, as my report read, the actual percentage that reflected in the revenue, it had lowered, but it was only because that I had moved the ARP funding monies that we got and put it in a separate fund because we don't want to co-mingle the, the grant funds versus the general fund. And now I do want to express the fact, just because I moved that actual money into another fund, the fund balance did not drop. Keep in mind that our fund balance of 95, 96% was based on June 30th budget records, okay? So it does not drop. But, you know, but upon receiving advice from the lawyer that this should be done because the, the grant monies and the general fund should not co-mingle and we have to report them separately. And so that's, this is the reason why I did this.
Anybody have any questions for Sherry? I have one question. These two, these are set up in separate accounts, right?
Exactly.
These two grants?
Yes.
The ARP funding. How long is that going to be in the account? I mean, does it just stay there?
It stays there until it is expended. And we do have a certain timeframe.
That's what I, is there a time limit on that?
There is, and it, it's a couple of years out. We've actually got about a year and a half to decide what we're going to do with the funds.
Okay.
And then that will determine how long we've got to spend it. But that was one of the things that Lee Worsley talked with you all about, once we finish the strategic plan, to see what part of that, if any, needed to be used with ARP funds.
So we can use some of this money for those programs that he was talking about?
Some of them. It's, it's very gray water.
I knew you had said that, so that.
That, that one in particular is, is pretty good. Just because it's, it's very restricted and just, you know, to be transparent, it's because that money is coming from the federal government because of the pandemic. And so they're restrictive on how those funds can be used and what is considered to be affected by the pandemic to use the funds on.
So that explains that.
That's what we're, we're.
That's what I wanted to be sure of, that we had a time limit and we were aware of that time limit because I don't want us to let it slip by and we not use the funds if we have them.
Exactly. And keep in mind that whenever we, at the, whenever we go to finalize our budget and we want to go ahead and vote on that budget, we will have to vote on the general fund and the enterprise fund budget as well as the ARPA funding and the SCIF funding grants that we have. Okay?
Okay, I understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. You do a great job. The next, we have Ms. Wendy. Planning, zoning, economic development. How many hats do you wear, Wendy? Okay.
You have everything in front of you? Now that the weather is changing a little bit, Bradley's able to get out there and we're doing a little bit more on code enforcement and zoning enforcement. So that's, those numbers are going up as well. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Yes, ma'am. On the, on the planning report, one items number, one, two, three. Well, actually, the cottage is at Wilson's Mills, the building is 65% complete now. Could you remind me, Wendy, at what stage we, we go to the builder and say it's time to put up that fence around the retention pond? As per the agreement?
That has to be done before the final inspection is approved. So they may wait until, there's no timeframe on that as far as ordinance goes. But it has to be completed before we take over the streets and before we do the final or approve the final inspection on that subdivision.
Okay. And that's when we'll tell them, remind them? Okay, very good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Wendy? Thank you, Wendy, good job. Emily, do you have a report for us?
Events committee's been working hard on a farmers market that we're going to start in May. It's going to start on May 7th, run through October. And we're starting now every first and third Saturday. We've shared on our Facebook several times. I know that a lot of the employees have shared it on their personal Facebook pages as well. So go check it out, tell your friends and spread the word because we're hoping to make it a big event.
Wendy, will this conflict with the Clayton Farmers Market?
Clayton does have a farmers market every Saturday. So there will be some Saturdays where there's going to be a Clayton one as well as one here.
And how many participants, as far as vendors, do we have?
So far, we have, I think, nine. And that includes concession trucks, because we are going to have concession trucks at some of them.
Okay. Out of that, out of that nine, how many are going to be farmers with, with produce?
One. One.
And the others are going to be concession trucks?
The others are going to, no, the others are going to be homemade goods. We've got a couple people doing crocheted items. Everybody that's going to be out there, it's either going to be homemade goods, homegrown goods. It's not going to be like anybody out there for a big company or anything like that, so.
Or no yard sale.
Oh, yes, and no yard sale items.
Like to see some more farm products out there.
Yes, that's why we're asking you to spread the word. So we've, and we sent out, I think, 40 applications, people that we've had in the past at events, as well as people that we know in Johnston County or surrounding counties, to get them to come out. So we'll see how it goes.
Thank you.
Chief Williams?
Word in front of you, also a couple amendments that I'm requesting.
Looks like y'all been busy.
Yeah, we have, it's been a busy month.
Anybody have any questions for chief? Chief, if, if I understand these general order policies that you've got in front of us, you are requesting that these items in red be added and, and this would correct them?
Yes, that's correct. It just amends existing policies that we already had, takes out a few phrases and adds some other material.
Okay, so we need to vote on these one at a time, Leanna? Okay. The first one is a general order 200 dash seven, the use of force. And all of you can view in your packet what he's wanting to change. Does anyone have any questions for chief on the wording? I think it's, I think it's very good. I think you've tried to cover everything that there would be a question about.
I make a motion, we approve the Police General Order Number 200 dash seven dash Use of Force.
Councilman McGowan made the motion. Councilman Tripp seconded, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed? The next one is a general order 200 dash two, uniforms and equipment. I mean, I'm sorry, 200 dash 12, thank you, good. And here again, this is just general stuff that you're adding in and?
Yes.
I believe this is also necessary and I, I like the wording that you've put in here.
I make a motion, we approve the Police General Order Number 200 dash 12 dash Uniforms and Equipment.
Councilman McGowan made the motion. Councilman Dobbin seconded, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed? The last one is general order 200 dash 13, sidearms, shoulder weapons and harness. Hosters, hosters, okay. Chief, is, this includes the new equipment?
Yes, it does.
That we purchased?
Yeah, it added that to it.
Okay, and that's basically the only thing that was done, changing the equipment, the guns and?
Yeah, just added the rifles.
I thought that's what it was. Anyone have any questions for chief?
I guess we need a motion on 200 dash 13. I make a motion, we accept the most changes from, from chief. General Order Number 200 dash 13, subject being sidearm, shoulder weapons and holsters.
General Order Number 200 dash 13, subject being sidearm, shoulder weapons and holsters.
Councilman Brown made the motion. Councilman McGowan second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed? Thank you, chief.
I'd like to add one thing. Um, just want to publicly commend one of our officers. Saturday, April 16th, he was on patrol at the park. And just to show you that, you know, we are growing and we're not the small community that we used to be. During routine patrol, suspicious vehicle at the park. He sees a vehicle, runs to tag, eventually makes a traffic stop. Turns out the gentleman was on the sex offender registry list. He was parked at the park facing, you know, facing the playground, you know, watching children. So he was arrested, charged with a class H felony. So, you know, it was productive and we got him off the streets. But again, it goes to some of the security measures that we already have in line, you know, coming for the park and around the community. So that was Officer Thomas that did that.
Okay.
I was going to guess Officer Thomas. Way to go. Tell him thanks.
Yes, tell him thanks.
The kids and their moms thinking too.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
I, I have a question. Um, do, does, does all the, our cars have wifi in them now?
Yes. Um, MiFi.
Okay.
Which is essentially the same thing. Yeah.
I know at one time we were having to swap out.
Well, we're still swapping out, but when they're on duty, they have that capability. As far as individually, um, no, not necessarily. But when they're on duty, yeah, they do have that.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, chief. Thank you for your good work.
All right. Thank you.
Patrick?
Guys got my March report. Any questions?
You are working the community service people. You.
I've contacted all of them and um, the other, they're, they're too busy at this moment to come in. So um, me and my coworker are starting to work on the streets, try to pick up the trash and stuff as we can.
Coworkers working out, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Patrick, can we talk about the mower? You don't want to talk about the mower. I'd like to talk about the mower. What's going on with the mower?
Mower's fine now. We just got it back. Everything's good with it.
Is it up for sale yet?
Don't joke.
Uh, we're working on possibly getting another one so we can get rid of that one.
And is it, and it's running?
Yeah, it's running. It's running great.
For now? Okay.
You should.
I like to know these things. Thank you, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Patrick.
Do, do we have, do, do we have a, uh, somewhat of a larger mower for cutting community park out there along the, the uh, the temporary fence that's, that's out there?
Like a bush hog or like, uh, yeah, we have a bush hog. Yeah, we got a, we got a bush hog.
Right. And I didn't know if we had one or not.
Yes, sir.
Councilman?
One question.
Okay.
Uh, on the park, why is the situation with rugby people in the, in the fields? In other words, when are they going to finish up the fields?
The fields are finished and the, the grass seed has been planted. So.
That was my question.
Yeah. That has been finished.
Leanna, it, it's my understanding they're planning on coming in the fall. Is that?
If the grass grows, yes. So that's what they're hoping.
Okay, councilman. Does anybody have any comment? Anyone have any comment? Okay, yeah, okay. I opened the second open forum at 7:26. Now your chance. Cut, cut, cut on your mic. It's been cut off.
Jackson Hoffman, 5300 US 70 business. Um, couple of things. First time my wife and I have been here. So um, I'd like to say thank you for letting us allow you to, to come here, number one. And number two is um, as a taxpaying person, even though we're not annexed to the city, but we do pay taxes to the Wilson Mills Township. And I've noticed that over the years, but uh.
Now you do know that that just goes to the fire department?
Understand. Yes. But, and police department too, I hope. But uh, any, anyhow, um, I wanted to know, getting back to the traffic end, now that this city has annexed on the other side of the road and the other side of the road, within that area, the traffic is like Indianapolis 500. And I don't know whether you're the people that I talk to, maybe cut some of this down. Traffic lights coming, props possibly. I don't know how that works, but uh, the traffic does need to stop or no, get better. So, um, another thing is, um, the, it, what, let me ask you this. Your thoughts on that?
The only thing I can tell you is that if it is warranted, then the developer will have to do it. Because it, it would have to be under this plan and it would, if the traffic is a problem, DOT would have to make that decision. And then it would go through.
Is, does the, does the township do, do a study on that at all? No? No? Okay. I, I didn't know whether you guys were involved now or not.
We don't, we don't own, we don't own the road, sir. They're all, they're all state.
I understand DOT, but anyway, that's what I wanted to know. Um, good, good job to these guys too, because I see them out there. So it's good.
Anyone else? Close the open forum. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Councilman Trippett made the motion to adjourn. Councilman Dobbin second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.